So, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to this joint work session between the Cowherd County Commissioners and the Cowherd County Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I have with me Vice President Commissioner Bresso, Commissioner Cox, and Commissioner Ireland is, will be here momentarily. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bresso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Greg Kern, Acting Chair of the Planning Commission. This evening, we have Commissioners John Tuohy, Lisa Williams, Chris Gadway, Wilson Freeland, and our newest commission, James McQueen. Dr. Richard Holler will not be with us this evening.
Thank you. So, tonight's work session is for the zoning ordinance update, and we're going to be looking at Articles 2021. At this time, if staff is ready. Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And my name is Will Hager, and I'm a planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning that's been helping out with the zoning ordinance update. And before we get into the focus of tonight's work session, I just want to go over a brief introduction. Staff prepared a draft zoning ordinance to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the current comprehensive plan. That draft zoning ordinance was made available to the public in May of 2023. Joint work sessions and public forums have been held monthly to review articles of the draft zoning ordinance and will continue through May of this year. CowherdCountyMD.gov/zoningordinanceupdate is the website where you can access links to draft articles, the draft zoning map, find out where to send public comment, and find other supplemental materials. And so the focus of tonight's work session is going to be draft Articles 20 and 21, Forest Conservation and Natural Resources. So, in last year's Maryland legislative session, a major overhaul of the State Forest Conservation Act was passed and signed by the governor. The forest conservation article that was released as part of the May 2023 draft zoning ordinance was written prior to this update to the Forest Conservation Act, so it is now out of date and will need to be significantly rewritten in order to bring in line with changes required by the state. The Maryland Department of Natural Resources has been tasked with interpreting this legislation and developing guidance for counties on how to implement these changes. So because this article will need to be significantly rewritten in order to bring it in line with updates to the Forest Conservation Act, we didn't believe that a full review of this draft article was practical at this time. Now, there have, there has been some legislation passed recently that will move the timetable for implementing these forest conservation updates back even further and give us more time to address them in the ordinance, and we'll discuss that a little further on the next slide.
Well, can I ask you, do you anticipate by the time all of our zoning review is completed that we will have this included with the zoning ordinance? No, it's going to take longer.
Yeah, I do touch on that on the next slide.
Very good.
And on this slide, we did want to highlight a few of the significant changes that are on their way due to the update to the Forest Conservation Act. But before we even get into that, I just wanted to make it clear, when we talk about forest conservation regulations, these are regulations that really only apply if you're pursuing either subdivision or development that would require a site plan, or grading, or a building permit, or some kind of sediment erosion control plan. If you're talking about a couple of hazardous trees in your backyard that you're looking to remove, these forest conservation regulations wouldn't apply for something like that. But back to the update, one of the primary features of this update to the Forest Conservation Act is a complete restructuring of how the reforestation requirements are determined for a development project. So the way they're structured now, the default reforestation requirement is a quarter of an acre of forest planted for every acre cut. Now, if you've cut enough forest on the site that you've crossed a threshold, what's called the conservation threshold, then the reforestation requirement becomes much stronger. Every acre cut after the conservation threshold has been crossed has a reforestation requirement of two acres of forest planted for every one acre cut. And where that threshold is depends on the zoning district for the property. So in the farm and forest district where you want to preserve farms and forest, you're going to hit that threshold a lot sooner than you would in, say, a town center district. So maybe the most significant piece of this legislation updating the Forest Conservation Act is that the forest, is that forest cleared must be replaced at a one-to-one ratio, one acre of forest planted for every acre cut, unless located in a priority funding area that is also not a priority area for retention of forests, in which case the requirement would be half an acre of forest planted for each acre cut. So in a way, this simplifies the formula that determines reforestation requirements, but in simplifying it, it also increases the reforestation requirement significantly, which was one of the goals of this legislation. Some other highlights of the legislation, it restores mitigation banking as a credit-worthy practice, up to 50% credit in priority retention areas. For those unaware, a forest mitigation bank is an area of land that has been intentionally forested for the express purpose of providing credits for forest conservation reforestation requirements. And also legislation, also the legislation provides exemptions for some, from some reforestation requirements for transit-oriented development, multifamily housing, and solar facilities. So these updates to the Forest Conservation Act were originally scheduled to take effect July 1st, 2024. That was the date that was set for implementation of the legislation that passed last year. However, additional legislation has been passed by the General Assembly very recently in this year's session, and my understanding is that this legislation pushes the implementation date for most of these updates back to July 1st, 2026. So what I'm thinking is, at this time, is that for the next draft of the zoning ordinance, for the forest conservation article, we'd like to keep the substance of the requirements close to what they are currently with only a few minor changes. And then after the state has given the county guidance and produced an updated model ordinance, which they are required to do in this new legislation by July 1st, 2025, we could then focus on updating our forest conservation requirements so that they are in line with the updated forest conservation law by July 1st, 2026, as required. And those updates may have to come in the form of a tax amendment since the new zoning ordinance would hopefully have already been adopted by that time. So that's all I had on forest conservation at this time. I just wanted to pause to make sure that what I just went over is clear, and if anyone had any questions.
I do have a question, Will. If, say, somebody has 10 acres in Dunkirk that they wanted to clear, and it's in a forest conservation area, does that replanting of the one-to-one ratio apply to any other 10 acres in the county if they had 10 acres of forest conservation area in, say, Prince Frederick or Owens? Could they plant that 10 acres in Prince Frederick Owens to offset the 10 acres they cleared in Dunkirk?
You're talking about getting reforestation credit off-site sometimes?
Correct. Or does it have to be on the same site?
There's a priority sequence in terms of preferences, but I do believe that that is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
If that's all, we'll move on to the next article. Article 21, Natural Resources. And the first thing I want to make clear here is that the regulations of Article 21, these do not apply inside the critical area. The critical area has its own regulations and protections of sensitive environmental features that are separate from the regulations of this article. For those that are unaware, the critical area includes areas that are in the county 1,000 feet from tidal waters. So in the current ordinance, regulations protecting sensitive environmental features outside of the critical area are found in Sections 8-204, rotable soils adjoining streams and slopes 25% or greater adjoining streams, Section 8-205, wetlands, and Section 8-206, development adjacent to perennial and intermittent streams. In the draft, the regulations protecting these sensitive environmental features, including streams, wetlands, steep slopes, highly rotable soils, and buffer areas, have been consolidated and are included within what is called the Natural Resource Protection Area, or the NRPA. The Purpose Section of Article 21 states as follows, "The purpose of the Natural Resource Protection Area is to serve as a buffer that will minimize disturbance to sensitive environmental features from future development. The intent of the NRPA is to protect water quality and quantity in streams, watercourses and wetlands, protect steep slopes, and minimize erosion and siltation, protect native and non-invasive vegetation, and to protect persons and property from environmental hazards such as erosion, siltation, and floodwaters." And in the draft, how the NRPA is delineated is dependent on whether the parcel fits the criteria of what we're calling the NRPA 1 or the NRPA 2. Roughly speaking, on parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, the protections of sensitive environmental features have been strengthened in the draft. On properties that fall within the NRPA 2, the protections have been designed to be as close as practically possible to as they exist today. So the NRPA 1 would apply to parcels, lots, outlots, residue, and open space created during the subdivision process after the adoption of the updated zoning ordinance outside of town centers. The NRPA 2 would apply to parcels, lots, outlots, residue, and open space created prior to the adoption of the updated zoning ordinance outside of town centers, and to all parcels within town centers, no matter when they were created. And the NRPA 2 may also be applied on lots created after the adoption of the updated zoning ordinance, if the lot was created through the combination of smaller lots or parcels which existed prior to the adoption of the updated ordinance. And the reason for that exception is that sometimes pre-existing lots, often in older communities, are combined through the subdivision process in order to create enough buildable area to construct a dwelling. And for lots in that circumstance, it didn't seem fair to hold them to the same standards as you would a large parcel that's being developed and separated into numerous smaller lots. And so on the next few slides, we'll compare the protections of the NRPA 1 with the regulations in the zoning ordinance currently. On parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, a minimum 100-foot buffer from both sides of perennial and intermittent streams would be required. Under current regulations, the minimum buffer from perennial and intermittent streams is 50 feet. On parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, in the case of contiguous steep slopes of 25% or greater, the stream buffer shall be expanded to the top of the slope plus 20 feet. Under current regulations, the stream buffer is expanded four feet for every 1% of slope or to the top of contiguous steep slopes of 25% or greater, whichever is nearer to the stream.
Excuse me, Will. Where did that 20 feet come from?
So, we, we discussed, when we were discussing these changes, we met with the staff from Soil Conservation District, and in the critical area, the regulation is an additional 50 feet. And so we asked Soil Conservation District if that, if it made sense to apply that same standard outside the critical area, and they didn't, they thought that was a little bit too strong, and we asked for their recommendation, and that's where the 20-foot came from.
I'm just trying to understand it, because the Health Department right now is using a 25 to 25 rule, and plus MDE will grant you a variance of that 25-foot. So I'm just trying to understand their guidance and your guidance, that's all.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Not really.
Okay.
So are you going to, are you going to give people variance of that 20 feet that you're speaking of, or will Health Department rule over you?
Bear with me for a second, because we touch on all of those subjects.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Cox is looking for some consistency.
Yes.
That was the point of his comment.
Yeah, that's all.
I understand the comment, and we will touch on some of those topics that you just brought up.
Very good. Thank you.
So each one will be looked at individually. I mean, there may be some circumstances where the 20 feet does not apply, and you all would take that into consideration and expand the number at some point?
No, I think, I think, I think we'll just take into consideration the consistency point that Commissioner Cox is making there.
Are all critical areas the same?
The critical, the critical area is 1,000 feet from tidal waters. Everything outside of that falls under these regulations, not the critical area regulations.
Okay.
And then, so on parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, I think I already read this. So on parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, in the case of highly rotable soils, the buffer shall be expanded to the landward edge of the highly rotable soil or 150 feet, whichever is less. If the area of the 100-year floodplain is greater than the buffer or the expanded buffer as described in the section, then that area shall be included within the NRPA 1. And under current regulations, for lots created after May 1st, 2006, except in the Employment Center and Town Center districts, no structure grading or clearing is permitted on SRE or ERE soils within 100 feet of a perennial or intermittent stream. And just note here, SRE and ERE soils is outdated terminology, but essentially equivalent to how we define highly rotable soils, which are those soils that have a slope greater than 15% or soils with a cake value greater than 0.35 and with slopes greater than 5%.
So Will, I think I heard you say that the SRE and the EREs are outdated soil classifications. Is that right? So what does the new web soil, web soil survey show as similar soils?
My understanding is that the SRE and ERE classifications are comparable to how we define highly rotable soils. Ron, do you have anything to add to that?
Microphone.
I couldn't quote the exact soil.
And who are you?
I am Ron Marney, Cowherd County's Environmental Planning Regulator. Mr. Freeland, to answer your question, I don't have the exact soil classification for you, but Jen David, who works with our staff and was formerly with Soil Conservation, would be able to get you that information.
So we run into this recently, when the new web soil surveys were published, they eliminated some of the old soil classifications. My question is, will we be catching up to speed with web soil survey so we are identifying the new soil classifications?
That is absolutely the intent.
Okay, and another just thing I wanted to point out, that 150 feet figure in this provision here, that's another one that we discussed. That's a figure that we came to after we had a conversation with the Soil Conservation District. And on parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, a minimum 100-foot buffer from wetlands would be required. Under current regulations, the minimum buffer from non-tidal wetlands is 50 feet. On parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, in the case of contiguous steep slopes of 25% or greater, the wetland buffer shall be expanded to the top of slope plus 20 feet. In the case of highly rotable soils, the buffer shall be expanded to the landward edge of the highly rotable soil or 150 feet, whichever is less. And there are no equivalent requirements under the current regulations specific to non-tidal wetland buffers. And on parcels where the NRPA 1 would apply, any land area exceeding 5,000 square feet with a slope in excess of 25% and a buffer of 20 feet from the edge of the steep slope would be included within the NRPA, and there are no equivalent requirements under the current regulations in regard to steep slopes non-contiguous with streams. And now we move on to the NRPA 2, and as a reminder, the delineation of the NRPA 2 is intended to be close to how these protected areas would be delineated under current regulations with a few minor revisions.
Remind me again the difference between 1 and 2?
For the NRPA 1, that would apply to new subdivisions created after the adoption of this updated zoning ordinance on parcels outside of the town centers. The NRPA 2 would apply to those.
New ones moving forward. New projects moving forward.
That's the NRPA 1.
1, yeah. So the 1 is for new projects moving forward, 2 is for the parcels that have already been created.
Gotcha.
And so, on parcels where the NRPA 2 would apply, the stream buffer in the case of contiguous deep slopes of 25% or greater would be expanded to the top of the slope or to 100 feet, whichever is less. Under current regulations, the stream buffer is expanded four feet for every 1% of slope or to the top of contiguous deep slopes of 25% or greater, whichever is nearer to the stream. And so currently, the way that the expanded buffer is calculated due to contiguous deep slopes, that four feet of expansion for every 1% of slope, it's overly complex and it's something that both engineers and reviewers have struggled with over the years. And so simplifying that formula is something that staff has wanted to address for a while. And except within town centers and the Employment Center district, on parcels where the NRPA 2 would apply, if the lot or parcel was created between May 1st, 2006, and the adoption of the updated ordinance, the stream buffer would be expanded for contiguous highly rotable soils to the landward edge of the highly rotable soil or to 100 feet, whichever is less. And in the current zoning ordinance, for lots created after May 1st, 2006, except in Employment Center and Town Center districts, no structure grading or clearing is permitted on SRE and ERE soils within 100 feet of a perennial or intermittent stream. And a reminder that that SRE and ERE soil is outdated terminology, but essentially equivalent with how we define highly rotable soils.
So '06, significance of '06, remind me again.
That was when that regulation was added to this ordinance.
Will, why is there a difference in town centers and Employment Center districts versus everything else?
That'd be a good question for whoever implemented that policy in 2006. I'm not, I'm not sure, to be honest.
I mean, to me, if we're trying to protect.
I would say that it's probably because those areas are where growth is planned to be concentrated, and so it allows for greater flexibility.
Okay. But looking at it on its face, it's like, okay, in the town centers or the Employment Center districts, we're not going to protect the environment as much as we will in other areas.
That essentially is what it is.
Okay.
So is there any thought to change that?
Well, we had discussions about possibly applying the NRPA 1 in the town centers, but we decided against it, I think probably for similar reasons, that the people that wrote that regulation in 2006 wrote it the way that they did. If that's something that Commissioners would like us to consider, we can consider that. But that's, but we did not at the time that we wrote those regulations.
So the water quality inside the town center is not as important as it is outside the town center?
Well, it's all important.
Apparently, it's not.
Well, there's, it's not like you're, well, yeah, and it's not like there are no protected buffers in the town centers. There, there are still protected buffers, and they aren't, they just would be staying as, as close to where they are today.
I just think that the public's going to be concerned that a steep slope in the town center is not going to be protected as much as a steep slope outside of a town center, just because you want to develop the property.
And I was looking at it from a perspective of a residential landowner. If he sees that the town center is a business and the town center or the Employment Center district can get away with it, why can't he? It's almost like two-tiered justice, or two-tiered, you know, implementation of policy.
Well, that's, that is what it is.
Right, exactly.
So how do we, how do we fix that?
It's, I mean, it's very easy that we can certainly change the language and apply the NRPA 2 as well as NRPA 1 across the board, not excluding Employment Center and the town centers. That's certainly an option, if that's the direction we're getting.
That's the direction I would want to go with.
I just think that, you know, we're trying to protect water quality. I don't think we should reduce the standards just because you're in the town center.
Okay, thank you for those comments.
I'm just 25 first.
Tonight.
And so, the required setback from both the NRPA 1 and 2 is 10 feet in the draft, and that is consistent with the current setback requirement for the sort of buffer areas. One difference is that variances from the setback in the NRPA 1 are not permitted in the draft, which is relevant to keep in mind for this next provision we'll be going over. The following has been added to the draft. No portion of the NRPA 1 or the required setback from the NRPA 1 should be allowed within lots one acre or less in size. On lots greater than one, on lots greater than one acre in size, sufficient contiguous land for the construction of a building or dwelling with amenities on the lot shall be demonstrated. Minimum sufficient contiguous suitable land area shall be exclusive of natural resource protection areas, forest retention areas, septic recovery areas, and required setbacks. Minimum sufficient suitable land area shall be 20,000 square feet for lots having individual septic systems, and 10,000 square feet for lots or parcels served by public sewer or community septic system. All lots below this minimum shall be considered having marginal amounts of suitable land for building purposes, and may be required to provide detailed plot plans to prove suitability. And what this provision is trying to prevent is the creation of lots that don't have enough buildable area. We don't want a situation where a developer was maybe able to squeeze a building onto a lot, but then five, 10 years down the line, the homeowner wants to add a deck or pool, et cetera, and they find out they can't because they, a significant portion of the lot is located within a protected buffer area. The homeowner doesn't want to deal with that, and we don't want to deal with that. And so what this provision is trying to address is preventing those situations. So.
Does that match up with the current Health Department requirements?
It's 10,000. 10,000 on that, so it's just going to limit your square foot of what you can build and what you can't.
Yeah, and there's a similar provision in the current ordinance. Minimum sufficient contiguous suitable land area exclusive of steep slopes, buffers, forest retention areas, septic recovery areas, and required setbacks shall comprise not less than 5,000 square feet for lots having individual septic systems, and 3,000 square feet for lots being served by public or community septic systems. So we increased those figures for this provision. So what that would mean for a developer is that potentially, they would not be able to create as many lots as they otherwise could have. It's a possibility. And what that would mean is for lots, for developments that include lots that are an acre or less in size, both the NRPA and the setback would be located in the open space or in the residue, and the lots would be designed around that.
So there are no lots less than an acre outside of a town center, correct?
Yeah, the current minimum lot size outside of town centers is one acre.
One acre. So this would impact those lots that have.
Steep slopes less than 42,000 square feet, one acre, yeah.
Yeah, it would impact areas where there's rougher terrain, for sure.
Will, would this prevent the stormwater structures from being built on the open space?
If that open space, well, I also have a slide on that, but to answer your question, if the open space, if, if the open space overlaps with the natural resource protection. if the open space, i- if, if the open space overlaps with the natural resource protection area, that's something that we are proposing to change, to not allow due stormwater management facilities. But I got a slide on that, we'll get to that in a minute. So, while the NRPA includes strong protections from development, there are some uses, activities in development that are permitted. Agriculture is permitted with an approved soil conservation plan and a minimum twenty-five foot wide buffer, boarding streams, and wetlands. Forestry is permitted with an approved timber harvest plan. Basic maintenance, including removal of trees that are a threat to structures or invasive species, is permitted. Non-permanent disturbance for emergency fixes of existing stormwater management devices is permitted. Passive recreation and foot and walking trails are permitted, and utility transmission facilities may be per, may be permitted after it's established that there are no alternatives.
So, um, Will, just back a second. Remind me again, what was the, uh, buffer for streams back under, when we talked about soil conservation recommendation?
Twenty.
For.
Was it twenty feet?
For the NRPA one?
Mm-hmm.
It's one, it would be one, it would be for, uh, a minimum one hundred feet, one hundred feet minimum. If there's contiguous steep slopes, it's expanded to the top of the slope plus twenty feet.
Gotcha, thank you. So, Will, one more time with this recreation, foot and walking trails, they are permitted on steep, steep slopes?
So, there. Uh-oh. So, I think that there are some, uh, provisions in there. I don't know them off the top of my head. I can, if you give me a second, I can find them. Here's the, uh, the provision. Passive recreation and foot and walking trails, alteration of the natural environment, and removal of surface vegetation in these areas shall be prohibited with the exception of selective clearing to accommodate passive recreation and walking trails, which are constructive, constructed with environmentally friendly materials with approval, uh, with the approval of a vegetation removal permit. So, that's the exact word for word provision that we have in the article.
So, black tape included, black tape is included, mulch.
No, we're, I think we'd be.
Natural materials.
Right.
But we can be on steep slopes, though.
Yes, as long as it's minimal, minimal disturbance to just be able to get.
Meets those conditions, but it couldn't be hard surface, impervious.
So, roads and driveways, the following provision addresses roads and driveways in the NRPA. Road and driveways crossings, excuse me. Road and driveway crossings may be permitted after it's established and the Department of Planning and Zoning agrees that all options have been exhausted and there are no alternatives, or when stream or wetland crossings are necessary to comply with town center master plans. The developer shall be required to provide a written justification. The number of road and driveway crossings shall be minimized. If a road or driveway crossing is necessary, shall cross a stream at a ninety-degree angle whenever possible. If the, the affected area is designated conservation area on the record plat or requires the grading of steep slopes or highly erodible soils, then the disturbance and construction shall require approval of the planning commission. If the planning commission approves, slopes may be graded at, graded up to less than twenty-five percent for construction of roads to provide access to lots. And these provisions are essentially consistent with the current policies. I believe the provision of substance that's new here is the requirement that the road or driveway cross a stream at a ninety-degree angle whenever possible, and the purpose of that provision is to minimize the disturbance. And we touched on it a minute ago, but one substantive change has been added uh, in regard to, uh, new stormwater management devices. In the draft, new stormwater management devices would not be permitted in areas designated as natural resource protection areas. However, non-permanent disturbance at the NRPA for emergency fixes of existing stormwater management devices would be permitted. In the current ordinance, when stormwater management cannot be located outside of the stream buffer, stormwater management devices may be placed in the buffer with the approval of the planning commission for site plans and subdivisions and approval by the zoning officer in all of the cases. And in the draft, mitigation plantings are required for removal of vegetation for permitted activities in development in the NRPA on a one-to-one basis. In the current ordinance, mitigation plantings are required for removal of vegetation for permitted activities in development within the stream and wetland buffers, but required mitigation plantings are on a two-for-one basis. And there have been some changes proposed in the draft in regard to variances. In the draft, variances from the regulations of Article twenty-one are permitted in the NRPA two, which is aligned with the current policies, and, but are not permitted in the NRPA one. At environmental planning staff recommendation, the zoning officer or it's designate is authorized to grant administrative variances for disturbance to steep slopes for the purpose of slope stabilization in the NRPA two. And if a variance is granted, mitigation is required by planting on the site at a rate of one-to-one per square foot of the disturbance. In the current ordinance, variances within stream or wetland buffers require mitigation at a rate of two-to-one per square foot of disturbance. So, these changes would be a reduction in the amount of mitigation plantings a property owner would be required to plant for removal of vegetation for permitted activities and development in the NRPA. And this is proposed for a couple of reasons. One of them is that oftentimes there simply is just not enough room on the site for planting double the amount of vegetation that was removed for permitted activity or project. Another is, we're simply trying to be more fair to the property owner here. If the activity is permitted either outright or through a variance and the trees, and trees need to be removed, then eye for an eye, tree for tree, a one-to-one replanting requirement seems fair. And I think that it fits with what we're trying to do with the revisions to this article overall. Strengthening the protections for sensitive environmental features and buffers, but trying to do it in a thoughtful way, so strengthening them for new subdivisions, where the subdivisions and lots can be designed around these stronger protections with minimal impact to the property owners of individual lots, but keeping that protected area close to what it is today for lots that are already in existence, so that property owners don't wake up after a new ordinance is adopted and find out that half their house and deck and pool is now inside a protected stream buffer. And then relaxing the requirements in terms of mitigation plantings where we thought it was fair and made sense to do so.
Will, does the one-to-one apply to dead trees, for example? If you've got standing dead trees on a property that clearly are not alive, they're falling apart, do they, does that still apply to a one-to-one if you were to take those down?
That's a good question, but I'm not sure the answer to.
Here it comes, here it comes.
Colleen.
Colleen Brummett, I'm the, uh, one of the environmental planners with Planning and Zoning. So, normally when we're talking about dead trees, we will consider them what's called a hazard tree. So, if you have a standing dead tree in your backyard, you don't want it to fall on your house or your pool or your garage or anything like that. Similar to what Will was saying with the previous article where forest conservation wouldn't apply, we wouldn't have you mitigate either. Normally, what we have you do is take a picture of the fact that it is a hazard tree, um, and just apply for a vegetation removal permit. You wouldn't have to replant. The concept is you're leaving these areas alone. Nature's gonna put a new tree there on its own. You don't necessarily have to go in there to plant anything, no. Does that answer?
To some degree, but if it's not in, if a, if a man-made structure's not within reach of the height of the tree, does that still apply?
That boils down to would we consider it a hazard tree? And it's, I think it's, normally when they're coming in, it's, the homeowner just doesn't really want to wake up and it's fallen in their yard and now you have to clean it up. They'd rather have somebody come in and remove it before it's a problem.
Okay.
And so if it's something like that, where the tree is obviously dead and it's not really doing anything, um, they could just get a simple vegetation removal permit, have it removed, and then just let nature do its thing, and another tree's gonna be there in another couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, in summary, the State Forest Conservation Act was updated last year, and one of the primary, uh, features of the update is that forest cleared would be required to replace at a one-to-one ratio unless it's in a priority funding area. And the draft Forest Conservation article is going to need to be eventually rewritten to bring it in line with changes made at the state level that, that will now, with this legislation passed, be coming into effect by July first of two thousand and twenty-six. Article twenty-one, stronger protections of sensitive environmental features on lots, residue, open space during, created during the subdivision process after the adoption of the updated zoning ordinance outside of town centers. And one of the comments that I've heard so far is, it sounds like there is some, uh, guidance for us to also include town centers within the NRPA one. If I've, if I've heard the commissioners correctly.
Slope's a slope.
What was that?
A slope's a slope.
A slope's a slope. So.
And also in the Employment Center District.
Well, yeah, the Employment Center is, is outside of town centers, so that would be included there.
So, but they would be the same.
And yes, yeah, you're, you're, you're referring to, uh, that other provision, I've got it.
Yes, yes.
And so, at this time, and we already have received some, uh, some direction, but, uh, staff request that the Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners discuss, discuss draft Articles twenty and twenty-one, and direct staff regarding any recommended considerations or options to include in the draft articles going forward.
Questions, comments?
Good.
I think we've asked a lot of questions already, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
I think we're good.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Will.
Commissioners, you ready for public comment?
Yes, sir.
The Board adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. By Resolution fifty-one twenty, persons are welcome to address the Board of Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the Board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conducting of the Board's business. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, where you'll be allocated two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, where you'll be allocated five minutes. For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise, raise your hand function. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers at public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register, must register in advance. When there are none or no more speakers, uh, we'll move on to the next agenda.
There is no speakers online. Go right up to Mike.
Yeah, I know.
And it's always too low.
It'll come up.
Somebody rescued me the last time I was here.
You got some good staff here, I tell you that.
Okay, my name is Bob Estes, and I'm, uh, representing Friends of Hunting Creek, and I wish I had taken two days to, uh, look this over instead of, uh, uh, two or three hours because there's a lot of meeting there, and I congratulate them for, uh, putting in more protections, uh, than what we've seen before. What, uh, continues to, um, perplex or bother me is we talk about a hundred here, a twenty there, and something else there, but how do those actually apply to the conditions on the ground? As you all know, I wander around quite a bit, uh, the last, uh, in doing my, uh, stream, uh, sampling, I went to sixteen sites, and boy, was that hard. But you see a lot of stuff, and does, and I know you wanna protect, but do, just do these numbers actually protect what we have in Coward County? Uh, can you tell me that, uh, the rainfalls that we get and the slopes that we have, does this, and now I know there's a lot of regulations and a lot of, uh, uh, layers below this, this document, that's obvious, but are those documents going to, I guess, follow what we're trying to get out of this, uh, top-level document? Uh, what I've seen, uh, when I go out is failures. Failures to keep that sediment. And really, sediment is one of our primary, uh, pollutants here in the county becau, and that goes down, it kills off the grasses, which kill off the, uh, the feeder fish for the bigger fish, and ev, and people know that. So, it's not just a little dirt here and there, we all know that. But are we actually doing what the very high-minded and appropriate, uh, opening statements are asking us to do? There are a few things I definitely did like in this, for sure, and, uh, and certainly some of the strengthening. I like having a buffer extend above the top of a, uh, of a rise, when you can do it. The reason, the reason being, what I've seen in some of the places I go is if you stop and you still have the slope, then you're subjecting, uh, that less protected area to, uh, the ravages of whatever's flowing down the hill. One of the things you see, one, one, uh, thing that you will see, uh, is in some of the subdivisions, uh, they have, you know, storm drains. Well, you know, they, they're protected down below, but whenever you focus that water, it's almost like a laser, or like what you may have done when you're killing ants with a, with a magnifying glass. Is the sun burning your hand? No, not till you focus it. And if you're not, if you're not, uh, including things like that, then you're probably not gonna get what you're looking for. I don't know how much time I'm allowed or how much time I have, but, uh, let me see what else I've got here, uh. Oh, well, I can get in a lot of stuff in there, but I won't, uh, I won't say any, I won't just sit up here because I like to talk, which I do like to do, but. Yeah, I think I've, I think I've made my point, and I think you all probably feel the same way. It's like, what is a hundred feet? What is twenty feet? How does it, uh, how does it feed back to what's actually happening out there? Because if we don't get it right, then out there's gonna change a lot in ways that we don't like, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
So, no other questions or comments, so.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
So, before we do that, I do wanna, uh, I miss, I do wanna thank Commissioner Bueller for her service on the commission, and wanna welcome Commissioner Queen to the Planning Commission now. Welcome aboard. Now, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, am I muted? We adjourn the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Have a motion, a second that we adjourn. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion for recess, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, we're recessed, thank you.